Okay, everybody hear me out there? Thank you. Welcome to this September seventeenth Board of Supervisors meeting. Would you all please rise and join me? Mr. The flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to, I'd like to ask for a couple moments of silence for the officers that have been uh killed and injured in York County not too long ago. Please bow your heads. Thank you. May God be with each and every one of them and their families. Um, the first thing on the agenda is if anybody has a cell phone on them, would you please silence it or turn it off? Next on the agenda is public comment. Anybody have any public comment on the agenda items? If so, please state your name and address. Ding, none. We'll move on. Announcements. We will be holding an executive session tonight. For legal matters. Next on the agenda is consent agenda. August twentieth meeting minutes, wind plan review status, escrow release, action on plans about to expire, emergency services report, Public Works Building Zones Report, Planning Commission Conservation Committee Report, Mylars for Signature, Regency at Rock Hill Ridge, Previously Oakwood Terrace Treasuries Report. I will ask Greg to read for us, please.
Uh, yes, the treasurer's report as of August thirty first, two thousand twenty five, the general fund, two million four hundred and twenty dollars and twenty seven cents. Highway A two sixty nine, three hundred and fifty four dollars and eighty one cents, open space, one million five hundred and fifty one thousand, five hundred and twenty five dollars and cents. The park fund seventy nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy eight dollars and eighty seven cents. The equipment fund thirty two thousand, nine hundred and forty two dollars and seven cents. Highway capital, one forty eight sixty six. A streetlight forty one thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and fifty nine cents. The reserve fund, the general fund reserve, five hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and fifteen cents. Open space Manderfield, forty one thousand, four hundred and thirty six dollars and twenty seven cents. Sewerage maintenance fund, two hundred and twenty one thousand, one hundred and twenty eight dollars and thirty cents. Stormwater fund, one thousand, five hundred and fifty five dollars and fifty one cents, and the escrow funds, one million, five thousand, two hundred and twenty one dollars and sixteen cents.
Either of you gentlemen have any questions, concerns?
No, right over everything. It looks good.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for approval then.
So move.
So move.
I will second.
Second, all those signify by saying aye.
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 Let's have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward. Next on the agenda is confirmed appointments. Topsoil export for thirty one fifteen Meeting House Road. Berstein, the diet food storage warehouse, Sean Sparks, Sparks Industries. Yep, you're up.
I'll see.
You will.
All right. So good eve- good evening. My name is Sean Sparks. I'm here representing my family's business, Sparks Industries, um, as well as Thirteen's Inc. in reference to the project thirty one fifteen Meeting House Road in Telford. Sparks Industries is a locally based company, um, had, which has built its reputation, reputation uh on recycling, repurposing, and responsibly managing organic materials generated through construction, land clearing, and landscaping projects. Our mission is to take what might otherwise be considered waste and transform it into beneficial projects or products that serve the community. For example, we screen and recycle composted uh organic debris and create high quality materials that are used by homeowners, landscapers, nurseries, and garden centers throughout the region. By doing this, we not only reduce unnecessary disposal, but we also return valuable resources back into circulation, supporting both the local economy and environmental sustainability. We are seeking your approval to export excess topsoil located at thirty one fifteen Meeting House Road out of the township boundaries. Our plan is to set up a screener on site, process this material, and improve its quality to become more available uh for local residents, landscapers, nurseries, garden centers, and the township to use. We offer customers the opportunity to pick up this material uh themselves or take advantage of our delivery service. Even though a good portion of this pile will be utilized within the township, um, there will be customers utilizing this in surrounding townships. There's roughly ten thousand extra yards uh on site. The chances of another site within a township being able to utilize this volume uh set within uh within a set schedule are slim to none, but it is certainly an option worth considering if you guys have any ideas. Based on my experience, I've seen topsoil wasted over the years because of limitations set by townships. With limited options, sometimes the last resort is to dig a borrow pit and bury the topsoil on site in nonstructural areas as a way to level the site. I'm not saying that is the plan for this project in particular, but it does happen, which disappoints me to see a valuable resource buried. So topsoil is a finite valuable resource. It takes hundreds of years to naturally regenerate, and it should not be wasted. By screening, processing, and by screening and processing the soil, you're turning what what could be waste uh into a marketable, high quality material that supports regional landscaping, garden centers, and restoration projects. By moving this topsoil to regional homeowners, landscapers, nurseries, and garden centers, you're supporting small businesses and residents across the county and beyond. Screening and properly marketing the soil ensures its use for in soil enrichment, erosion control, and stormwater management projects. This creates a closed lucid, closed loop system where construction byproducts are repurposed into useful materials instead of being discarded. A single township is unlikely to need or or absorb ten thousand cubic yards in a reasonable timeframe. Broader markets ensure timely and efficient reuse. Uh, neighboring municipalities and counties often allow topsoil reuse and export when proper handling uh is guaranteed. With approval, the township enables sustainable reuse of a valuable resource which benefits the broader community, supports the green economy, and prevents unnecessary waste. That's it.
Well, your presentation was very well, and most of, most of the things that you had had stated there, um, I witnessed and agree with.
Yeah.
The, the issue comes with, um, you know, what our ordinance actually says in the township, the source of topsoil. Is there any questions or concerns from my fellow supervisor or comments?
I have a comment. Um, on your application, we would like to request permission to screen and export topsoil. To me, that means you're gonna sell it, right?
Correct.
At your business.
Yes.
You're making money.
Yep.
Okay. And the question I'm, I have to ask is, what's the benefit of this township?
Oftentimes, we, if a township has a storage facility, if we screen it, they might have a park, a garden project. They might have a stockpile. They can use it for their own projects, and we have worked with other townships to do that. Um.
Ten thousand cubic yards is a lot of topsoil.
What's that?
Ten thousand cubic.
Oh, it is. Absolutely. Absolutely. Usually, I mean, we, our, our company, we, we might have three or four screeners out at all times. We're big in Doylestown, New Hope, um, Newtown, Sellersville, and we kind of go all over the place, and we, wherever we set up a screener, we support the local residents. And a lot of different landscapers, homeowners come and pick up stuff, and they do pay per yard. Um, but it is recycling the the, the product of the site otherwise, which will just turn into landscape berms or just be buried on site.
What's the cost per cubic yard or?
Yeah, picked up residence is like twenty three dollars a yard. Yep.
Mr. Sherman, do you have any questions?
No, I was just gonna go through that. I actually did finally find the soil, the soil survey, so it's Redding Sea and Bowman'sville, so it's actually pretty good soil. And I will just mention that I know somebody who's involved with uh Little League baseball, who you may want to talk to, or might like you down to ask a couple of questions. So hopefully that might work out.
Yeah.
Uh, I will say to you that uh we accept and acknowledge your presentation. However, the applicant, the applicant still has to answer some questions that the township has had that have been raised and filed.
Okay.
And one of those questions was to him, why not dig to fill out the shale and put the topsoil back on the property?
Dig the shale.
Dig the shale where the, where, where you're excavating the, where he is, not you.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the project.
Nothing to do with you. Your present, that's why I'll say, I'll say, your presentation, we acknowledge, we're not gonna act on it now.
Correct. Is there any questions I can ask before that, or I guess I can talk with Zach?
I don't think that you can, you can answer any of the questions. It's, it's between him and his engineer and the group.
Fair enough.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go on, have a good night.
Thank you.
And I will chime in to remind them to look for dinosaur prints in that shale.
An arrowheads.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. Moving forward. Uh, yes, we went.
So moved.
Okay, motion's been made.
Second.
Second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Table, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is the committee reports. Park and Rec, Mr. Dave Rice, how are you?
All right, I'm doing well. How's everybody else doing?
Oh, good. Wow, I'm, yeah, I'll put bring down my, all right, so September Fest, everybody's aware of it. If not, they haven't asked anybody else to come. It's next Sunday, not this coming Sunday, the following Sunday, the twenty eighth. We have a great time. We have free family fun for four hours over the park. We have an excellent time. We have the police officers out there. We have the fire departments out there. We have EMS. We're gonna have, I mean, a ton of things that we have on the agenda that we're gonna be doing, all free, with the exception of the food trucks. Everything else is free. So come out, bring your family, bring your friends. Come on out and just stop by and see Ferris and Fifi. They're kind of cool. They're the iron pigs. So it's a great day. Um, and like I say, it's free. So bring everybody. Come on out, and it's the thirtieth annual. Did I mention that? There's a big sign across the Ridge Road that says that? It's a reminder, it's thirtieth annual, so it's kind of cool. We're gonna actually be um dedicating our gazebo. If anybody's been to the park and seen a gazebo, it's pretty cool. Um, so we're gonna be making dedication there, so it's gonna be first thing at the gazebo, and we're gonna be dedicating that first thing of September Fest. Next on the agenda, we have Feature Film and Fire. If anybody remembers any Home Alones, it's gonna be the original this year, so it's awesome, and hopefully, chief, you have some officers that are gonna be there. Excellent. They always love the movies. Oh, they like September Fest, too, but I think the movies are cuck. They're kind of cool, too, so um, that starts at dusk, and we have a good time. It's always a great time with the kids, so they always have fun, and there's always a fire there, so you know, barn, we keep everybody, you know, far enough away so nobody gets burned, but responsible. Anything else?
One quick comment is, uh, Ibi doesn't know yet, so don't tell her. It's a surprise.
I have a question. He didn't, he didn't make, he didn't say a name, see?
I didn't say a name.
You were spot on, Mr. Rice.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, David.
Um, what time is the dedication ceremony? Is it twelve o'clock?
On a nose.
That's firstly, after.
That is absolutely first, yes.
Okay.
So if you can plan to be there.
Right.
Little prior, please. That'd be awesome. So we're trying to line everybody up there before.
Now, I hate to ask this, but I gotta ask.
Go ahead.
I know this took a lot of effort and a lot of planning. You have a huge list, as you said. Do you have a rain date?
No, unfortunately, it's hard to schedule all the vendors and all those events that we have, yes. That is the toughest part about it, yes.
Not gonna rain.
Unfortunately, no.
Well, two years ago, we had to, you know, we had to cancel hurricane, right?
I say my prayers every day for sunshine.
Okay, any other questions for Dave?
I have none.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I will make that.
I will second.
Motion's been made, second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, moving forward. Next on the, on the agenda is the commission reports. Penriddge Regional Police, Mr. Chief, how are you?
How are you doing, sir?
Okay.
Apologize, I was not ready. All right, I have the September twenty twenty five activity report for the Penriddge Regional Police Department. It's actually, these are actually August dates, not September's date. Yeah. Right, yeah, this is August information. This is my mistake this month, Mr. Libman, not yours. Um, but I can tell you the numbers of the crowds. All right, so we'll start off. We, uh, Police Department handled eight hundred and twenty five calls for service. Um, of the, of those calls, three hundred and twenty six were in East Rock Hill Township, four hundred and ninety three were here in West Rock Hill Township. With six of those calls assisting our neighboring agencies, the Police Department handled one, handled thirty one traffic crashes. Uh, seventeen of those crashes were reportable crashes, fourteen of them were nonreportable, with nine occurring in East Rock Hill Township and twenty two of them here in West Rock Hill Township. Our criminal activity for the month of um August is seven crimes against property, four crimes against persons, three crimes against society, and twelve group B offenses. These crimes include, uh, in East Rock Hill Township, we had a hit and run crash, a DUI crash, sexual offense, one fraud, two harassments, two thefts, and two weapons offenses. In West Rock Hill Township, we had three hit and run crashes, one DUI, one criminal mischief, one drug offense, two DUIs, one DUI crash, two DUI incidents, one fraud, one harassment, two violations of our local ordinances, two thefts, one trespassing, and one underage drinking incident. So our criminal charges that we filed for the month of August, um, six thefts, six DUIs, one leaving the scene of a crash, two charges of corruption of minors, two charges of furnishing alcohol to minors, five charges of underage drinking, two charges of public drunkenness, two receiving stolen property, one theft of services, two charges of defiant trespass, one fugitive from justice, one PFA violation, two drug penalty charges, two drug possession charges, and one harassment. Our other police activities for the month of August, two hundred and twenty two traffic enforcement details, one hundred and thirty two traffic citations were issued, one hundred and eighteen traffic warnings were issued. We conducted eight school checks, one hundred and fourteen park checks, seventy eight business checks, and officers participated or attended one hundred and sixteen hours of training in August. So for the year, uh, the Police Department has handled or responded to six thousand, five hundred and seven calls for service, handled two hundred and twenty three traffic crashes, two hundred and eight offenses have been reported, two hundred and thirty four criminal charges have been filed, and our officers have attended or participated in one thousand, five hundred and twenty hours of training. And that would be your August twenty twenty five police activity report.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Any questions for the chief?
I have no questions about your report, but I do have a question for you after. Now, do you have anything? Go ahead. Um, go first. I was leaving Home Depot, um, the back way and back on the Central Avenue in Sardertown. I got up to the stop sign, and I saw what I thought was a motorbike coming towards me. Asked me, I followed it out, made a left turn on Bethlehem Pike. Then I realized it didn't have lights and didn't have a license. It was huge. It was electric bike.
Yes.
What's going on? Where's the differentiation on that?
It's a great question, Mr. Mr. Kongwood. And I know that you told me ahead of time you were gonna ask me this, and I forgot about it, but um, so, but I'm gonna try, I'm gonna try to pull this, pull this from my head here. Um, so I drive the, the electric bicycles are, um, if they are designed to go under twenty miles per hour, um, I believe that they do not need to be, if they're designed to go under twenty miles per hour, they're not supposed to be operated on um, with a driver's license, registration, insurance, or anything like that. If it's anything over twenty five miles per hour, it needs to have all that safety equipment you mentioned. They need to be insured, registered, driver's license, um, all that fun jazz, and they also, I believe that they can only be operated on roadways that are posted at twenty five miles per hour, but don't quote me on that, but I'm pretty sure that that's a new section of the law that was just passed. Um, it is something that we're running into. It is a problem.
It seems like it's getting out of control.
Yeah, a lot of municipalities, I know that there's a lot of municipalities, um, not so much around us, that have had issues with crashes and people being injured severely. Um, we have actually had a few DUI incidences already this year with people on these electric bicycles, so um, they are a concern, and uh, you know, we're doing the best we can with them, so.
I will share, chief, with in my travels, um, throughout this, the neighboring states and stuff, I've witnessed, um, people riding along the road in these scooters, these electric scooters too as well.
Yeah.
They're, they're the opposite way, which, which I, I mean, I know that everybody here has heard about the girl that was killed, the girl was killed down there, Chester area. Two girls were hit on scooter, and one died here six months ago.
Yeah.
So it i- it is a real problem, and, and I don't know what you do, because they just, they zoom, they, it, it could be adults, and it could be young kids.
Yeah, I think, I think the part of the concern is that, um, parents don't, a lot of parents don't quite understand that these things are, can be considered motor vehicles or low speed electric vehicles, I think is what they're classified as.
Right.
Um, and they, they buy them for their children, and then it turns out that they're more like dirt bikes than they are like, uh, regular bicycles. So, yeah, there are concern. We've had, we did have an incident in East Rock Hill that caused us a little bit of, uh, issues with, uh, them riding on private property, but yeah, no, I mean, they're a concern, and hopefully we can get education out there and with them, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because I know that came, pretty much every officer in Sellersville and Percival Borough has at some point been chasing down some kid on a e-bike for the last six months or so.
Yep, yep.
Okay, with that said, um, anything else? Or entertain a motion for approval of the chief's report?
So made.
Okay, motion's been made.
Second.
Second, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Hang around, please, till the end.
I will.
Okay, thanks. Okay, moving forward. Next on the agenda is the Joint Rec Authority, Angela Goodwin.
Uh, actually, the Joint Rec Authority is having a meeting pretty much right now. Okay.
So Greg, I'll ask you to read their report, please.
Sure, um, you have the report in front of you, the minutes, uh, from August twenty twenty five meetings, the slide, the aquatic design made a suggestion regarding the purchasing of the slide to help increase membership. Discussion was started, and at our October meeting, we will vote on which slide to purchase. We're going to start a fundraising to help with the purchase of the slide. Uh, sip and dip, we had about, uh, forty one, forty two people and raised about five hundred and thirty dollars after paying for the food and the DJ. People really enjoyed this event. We may do more events like this next year. Uh, the doggy dip does not have details yet, but it seemed to be a good turnout. Um, the iron pigs tickets, uh, there was an interest, so they donated it to a needy friend. Unfinished business is a feasibility study. Um, they receive, uh, four designs which would work under the current footprint of the pool. We're holding a meeting tonight to decide which of the two plans, uh, to present at our public October meeting. A new business, the winterization process, the pool began to be empty for aquatic designs after they are done testing it. We're gonna put about two feet of water back in the pool as suggested by several old companies. Closing cleanup day is scheduled from, on nine twenty seven from nine to two. There was no public comment.
Okay. So at the end of that, down below there, where it says barcode ID township, are, are those season passes, season tickets that were sold?
Uh, yes, so it would be seasoned, those would be passed.
So I do see sixty two season passes from West Rock Hill. Is that a correct statement? I thank, I wanna thank whoever, I wanna thank whoever put that together, that, that, that we got that information, so.
Reggie and Olivia over it.
Okay, great. You, you make sure you thank them for that for me.
Of course.
And uh, anybody can see this report if they want to. Um, Hilltown has actually thirty six. Um, East Rock Hill is twenty nine, actually. Percival has thirty two. So, yes, there, there was a grand, grand, uh, total of three hundred and twenty six season passes sold, so that's, that's an increase.
Yep, yep. That's better.
Um, it is. I have a question, but it can't be answered tonight because I wanted to ask, um, the, you mentioned they were going to, um, purchase a slide.
Uh huh.
But they're, but they're going to do fundraisers to help with the purchase. I thought they would do the fundraiser first, see how much money they got. I, I don't know where they're taking the money from, um, unless they made that much money.
Well, there's money left over from, uh, conservation easement, and they actually did pretty good this year. I mean, season ticket sales were eighty three thousand. Uh, daily admissions pulled in basically twenty six. Day camps really helped keep everything afloat with like forty eight, almost forty eight thousand, and uh, about twelve thousand, eight hundred and fifty for fundraising contributions. So there's a
But last month, she made the statement that you made money, so I'm wondering why you're dipping into the conservation money.
Uh, well, we ended up breaking you, ended up making money, not a whole lot of money, because, you know.
Yeah, I think the, the account was a hundred and seven thousand dollars sometime in August. Yeah. The numbers I saw.
Unfortunately, commercial three.
Two hundred and twenty of the, of the conservation money was put into a
Yeah.
Put into a fund.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, as you all know from Running Park and Rec, it little bouncy horse costs you about a thousand dollars.
I, I, I do understand that, and I also know that I don't believe all your bills are in yet, because you still have to pay your insurance and electric, I think, till the end, till you usually get bills that trickle in like in November, December, right?
Yeah, well, I have to keep the, we have electric on, because we have the security cameras, you have to.
Okay.
There's some things that, uh, basically you shut off the water, but the other utilities still stay on, so that we have the cameras running, electric running, keep the lights on, so we don't have that many people skinny dipping and doing donuts at three o'clock in the morning.
Well, I do wanna thank you, uh, make, make sure you thank those girls for, for putting the, uh, total season tickets up there. Appreciate that very much.
And I would hope, um, that, I mean, I know they're meeting right now to talk about the feasibility study. I hope they're sharing, planning to share that with us very soon.
Yep, the first, I, I think the idea was to first figure out which one of the four versions
Right.
that they're going with, rather than get, rather than get borough and township. Okay, here are four things that we haven't decided yet.
Okay.
And they're gonna buy a commercial sliding board this time, not a
Homeowner, homeowner, it's not a residential.
And they're gonna, they have to sell that one. They still, I believe they're trying to sell it.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
And it's packed up at the, uh, Earl Hall, or back at the, uh,
Maintenance.
Garage, maintenance.
Thank you.
I'm sure they've been sliding down it when, when nobody's looking.
Okay. Uh, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
We have, we have a motion made.
I will second.
Second it. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, moving forward. Next on the agenda is, um, tax collector report Suzanne Clark.
Okay, sadly to report, I have collected no West Rock Hill Township taxes for the month of September as of date. But I would like to tell you how much I've collected as of date for the whole year for this, to this month. Um, I've collected five hundred and twenty seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety six dollars and fifteen cents. I'm due to collect approximately twenty seven thousand left between the next couple of months. That would, you know, take my budget down to zero. I've collected all but, um, for a streetlight tax, I've collected six hundred and thirty, six thousand, three hundred and seventy six dollars and eighty nine cents. We'd left to collect a hundred and twenty nine dollars and forty eight cents. So that's all I can report today.
Okay, any questions for Suzanne?
I have none.
Nope, none of that up.
Okay, entertain a motion for approval.
So made.
Motion's second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving forward, next on the agenda is the engine report, Mr. Balla.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the first item on the agenda is the Butterpig Builders, uh, Tim Snyder subdivision. You may recall this was, has generally been called the lot seven subdivision, or one of the leftover lots from the original subdivision, has had a thirteen lot subdivision approved back in two thousand and five, it looks like that was the resolution for approval. Um, it was never constructed in sometime in the past, well, I don't know how many years have been coming, Tim, but for several years, you've been coming back to the township with alternate plans for that lot in lieu of the thirteen lots of division. Uh, started out with long cul-de-sac plans, and then evolved into what plan you have here tonight, which is, uh, called frontage lots in those streets. Uh, was reviewed by the planning commission and recommended for approval with conditions, and they are here tonight to talk about, uh, presented this plan to you for review. I think that, um, you might be familiar with, one of the issues on this has been shared driveways and, and, and long driveways has served the lot, but that was an evolution of the elimination of the street. Um, that, that's how we got to here, so I'll let you make your presentation for the board.
Uh, good evening. My name's Alex Hughes. I'm with the Crossroads Group. I'm helping out Tim Snyder, the applicant, with this, this project. Uh, if you wanna go to the next slide. Um, it's located at two oh four Camp Rock Hill Road. Uh, it's about fifty four acres, total fifty three point eight acres in the RC zoning district, district, uh, residential conservation. Um, as was stated, there was an approved thirteen lot subdivision. This has reduced it down to six total proposed lots, um, eliminating the road, all that kind of jargon based on conversations with the planning commission and the applicant at previous meetings, previous years. Uh, I know they went through a couple of different sketches, and this is generally what was settled on. Um, the existing site is mostly woods. There's an existing barn with a driveway back to it that has some lawn around it. The barn is to remain. Um, the driveway's gonna be changed when the new lots are formed. Um, and some of the impervious Um, and some of the impervious will stay around the existing driveway. If you look on this sheet, the existing barn is right to the southwest of the six on lot six there where it's, it's hatched out, that's the existing, uh, pavement that's to remain. Um, along the south side of the property runs Butter Creek, that's what a bunch of that other hatching is. Um, there's wetlands, floodplain down there. Some of the lots do front on Butter Creek Road at the bottom in the south there, um, but that's basically unusable given the, the creek and all the wetlands and the floodplains there. There's also an existing storm drain easement that covers a good portion of the east side of the lot. Um, as part of this project, we're amending that to include the stormwater basin we're proposing. I believe that comes up later in the township review letter, but just pointing that out now. Um, the six lots, as were stated, are going to use shared driveways. This is to reduce the amount of impervious. Um, we are able, I'll discuss further at, at the waiver letter request. We can meet all the zone requirements to have separate driveways, but for stormwater purposes. Um, and just so you don't have four driveways running right next to each other, we decided to go to two shared with this proposal. Uh, we are using, utilizing on lot, public water and sewer for this project. Um, the planning module has been approved. The one stormwater basin is on lot four, basically right in the, around where that four is on the plan there. And that will catch all the stormwater for the site that needed to be created. And we do have our MPDS permit approved from the Conservation District. Uh, if you want to go to the, the next slide. Since this, um, PowerPoint was put together, we got a new review letter from WIN that was dated September tenth, so some of those numbers and comments don't really apply. Um, I, do you want to go through every comment in the letter?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
No problem.
Yep. So discussion item number one is about the, the shared driveways, which is waiver number seven in the li, uh, waiver request letter dated August thirteenth. Um, this is basically, like I said, we're proposing shared driveways to reduce overall impervious coverage for the lot. Um, we could, could do separate driveways if there's ever an issue in the future, they could separate them, but for this proposal, we're proposing two shared driveways that serve. Um, I believe it's lots one, two, and then three, four, and then there's a, another shared driveway on the east side that serves five and six. So essentially, yeah, the main thing is stormwater.
That's, that's a total of three shared driveways.
Three shared driveways for the six lots. Yep, yep.
Could you
Yeah, they, they only share the first about a hundred feet. If you go back to the plan.
Can you indicate the, the length of the shared portion?
Uh, the second one down.
That one?
Yeah, previous.
So the, the shared driveways for lot five and six, they're only shared for the first nine to fifty to seventy-five feet, something like that. The lots one and two come down and are shared to about here where they split off where the houses are. And three and four come a little bit farther down because they're larger flag lots. So they come down to about this center location here where three splits off and then four keeps going to the fourth house. Um, I don't know exactly how long that three, four shared driveway is. Yes, I think it was about eleven hundred feet, so it's a pretty long one. Um, but this was ultimately decided over a, a cul-de-sac road to go with the less lots and shared driveways.
I'm familiar with the plan.
Yep.
I was around with this.
Um, so that's, that's the first comment, um, and waiver number seven.
Do we want to tackle? Okay. I'll give you my opinion. I will not support the shared driveway at all. Personal experience. You never know who your neighbors are going to be. There's always arguments over maintenance, children driving too fast, family members. Too much bad can come over the shared driveway and you can create
Yeah.
turmoil between neighbors. It won't be him, it'll be whoever buys the lots.
Yep.
Or down the road, whoever sells the lot buys the lot. That's, that's my opinion.
Okay.
And I'm speaking to you from experience.
Yep.
Okay?
So I wasn't the original engineer on this project. I believe when it was originally submitted, shared driveways were allowed under the ordinance requirements. So as part of that, I, I believe we're allowed to ask for this and
You are allowed.
Somewhat entitled to it because it was not.
I'm only stating my opinion.
Yep. Yep. And we understand and they can separate them. We have the stormwater controls.
Yeah, that's a question I would have. If you, if you know you can separate them, why are you coming to this board with a plan that you're, you're trying to do multiple homes on the same driveway?
Because it was my preference.
Okay.
I, I think having four driveways ten feet apart.
You have to go up there.
Having four, Tim Snyder, property owner, um, having four driveways ten feet apart seemed to make, seem, seem, didn't seem to make sense to me. Um, I have a shared driveway, been going for twenty-some years. I've had no problems. I agree with you, there can be issues. But I also have to push back a little bit because most of what's been improved in townships and boroughs, we're sticking people in townhouses, in row homes, in twins, in duplexes, in quads, that they are parking in the same, are coming in the same driveway. We call it a road, but it's basically a driveway. They're parking next to each other. They're walking right up that same sidewalk. They walk into that house three feet from each other. They share a party wall that's paper thin anymore. They go out on their back patio and look at each other there. All I'm at, all we're doing is sharing the driveway and I'm having pull off. We, we've designed pull offs so they can get around each other. But it seems counter, it seems a little concerning. It, it's a little concerning to me that this is where the line is drawn and I'm not trying to be difficult here. But when you're putting cluster everywhere that you can to keep open space, and I'm not arguing that point, but you're forcing people to live closer together. But now you're saying, when I'm on four acres and seven acres and eleven acres and fourteen acre lots, you can't share the same driveway? And to be honest, we did the driveway is not a whole lot smaller than the road. At Camp Rock Hill Road, certainly not much smaller than Butter Creek Road, and people have been able to share that for how long? So that's one of the issues, that, that's probably the biggest issue for me in the sense of it doesn't seem to make sense. It seems like an arbitrary line being drawn. There are problems and I understand that. There could be problems.
Maintenance?
Well.
Who uses it? What time of the day, night they go down it? And I could, I could go on and on and on.
And that's all in, that's all in the people. We can't.
Correct, and you, Tim, you don't know who the owner's going to be. You're not going to be the owner of your property forever. Somebody else is going to own it.
I, I, I agree with that and I, and I understand that. The issue is we also can't, in the last board, they, they brought up Amazon drivers, Amazon drivers can't find a house. I got an Amazon driver stuck in my, stuck in my yard because he was driving from my yard into the other neighbor's property. I'm constantly getting them. So my point is, how do we legislate or how do we run the world based upon incompetence, I guess, or, or lack of caring?
We're not trying to run the world here. We're just trying to make it safe that every property owner can, can enjoy their drive.
And it will be deeded. They will have the right. A, as the ordinance stated, when, when this was submitted, I needed to make sure that the driveways, there was enough land to put stuff the driveways in. I complied with that, that's what I did. And that was the requirement. So if it's ever an issue, see, I kind of disagree with the rule, I, I kind of disagree with how it's designed, be quite honest with you. I think instead of the driveway being put on the line, it should be put on one driveway or the other and, and, and agreement or a deed, written in the deed, what is the requirement? Because if you put it on the line, if they want to split later, you're going to tear one driveway out and put a whole, two new ones in.
They are on deeds, Tim, okay?
I get it.
And the point I'm trying to make to you is the deed, just because it's on the deed, yes, that person has a right on it, but if the other person opposes it, that's where you create your turmoil between property owners and neighbors.
And that's why.
That's what I'm trying to explain to you.
No, I, I, I understand your explanation and I, I'm not disagreeing, it can happen. But like I said, we're putting people on postage stamped lots. They can have the same disagreements on those postage stamped lots, but we're okay with that.
Aside from the lots being nothing to me here, it's, it's a matter of individual driveways and people having control and owning their own driveway and not sharing it with somebody to where you can create problems. Nevertheless, I gave, I'm only giving you my opinion on the thing. Still have two other supervisors, if you convince or not. Okay?
And from the stormwater perspective, we designed each lot to have an additional five thousand square feet of store, uh, impervious coverage. So they can do whatever they want. If they want to build sheds, patios, decks, if they wanted to separate their driveways, they could do that.
Okay.
Um, so each one has a decent amount of building impervious for the basin.
Okay.
Um, just to handle any future, whatever they want to do, bigger houses, anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
So.
David, you, you still have more questions?
I may, but we can move on.
Okay. Al, you have any questions on it?
No, I looked over the plan, so I think I know the idea. Doing real estate for thirty years, I do understand the idea of having four, you know, four five driveways all in a row and like, okay, try to pick one can be uh, annoying. There's some benefit to efficiency of one location and you have to figure out which driveway you're going down, but you can put signs up. So I understand, I see both sides of this, I guess is the nice way of putting it.
Very good, thank you. Okay, move on.
Okay, um, comment number two in the win letter is about the waiver number one, which is, uh, blocks and lots. It's basically, um, the ordinance is written to try to encourage rectangular lots when you're subdividing. We have a very unique parent parcel, um, that has three different road frontages and a bunch of different, uh, bends and it's not a rectangle to begin with. It's hard to subdivide with rectangular lots. So the first waiver is basically saying that we can't meet all the width to depth ratios and make all the lot lines at ninety degrees, just give them the parent lot. So that's why we're requesting the waiver. That's comment number two, waiver number one. Do you have any questions? We do meet all the frontage requirements, everything like that. It's just to get these requirements, we couldn't square everything up.
Anybody have any questions regarding that matter?
Number two?
No, I understand this.
Okay.
I've had similar development situations where it's like, yes, we have frontage. Unfortunately, it's twenty foot tall cliff. Doesn't really help us too much.
Yep.
You need to have a shared driveway in that one, so. But it was a still similar, okay, you've got one entrance way and you split it pretty quickly, so there's no overlap.
Okay, uh, comment number three is just that, uh, recording comment, there's no, no action on that one. We, so we'll comply for us, we'll record the uh, natural resource plan.
Yeah.
Comment number four is about just legal descriptions and easement documents. That's, we'll comply, we'll get that finalized once everything else is, is approved. Uh, comment number five is about the existing barn. There's a note on there that it can't be used for commercial purposes once it's residential. Uh, no action for us on that.
But right now that barn's being used by the owner, right?
Yes, yep.
Instruction purposes or whatever.
Until the lots. Until the lots eventually sold.
Now, uh, clarify that for me. The lots or that lot?
That lot. Uh, the barn is completely on lot six, so it's not, not an issue with any of the other lots.
Would the, would the, uh, would that interfere with any of the other lots as far as the commercial, a commercial operation going on next to a residential?
Uh, I'm, I don't believe so. I think, are you just using it for storage or?
It's used for equipment, my equipment, construction materials, all that stuff in a construction business, repair of equipment inside, storage of equipment inside. That's what it's used for now. I would assume that's what it would be used for, even if I, 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 and maybe I'm over speaking, but even if I sell it, I would assume the next person would be a, it, it's labeled a barn. I don't know how it ever got labeled a barn. It's a forty by a hundred and fifty, sixteen foot ceiling garage. It was the old, uh, campground.
Hmm.
Indoor play area and lunch area. So how it ever got labeled a barn is beyond me. It is a garage and that's what I've been using it as so far.
Previously though, just a few sentences before, he said it would be used as that until the property was sold. Am I, am I correct in that?
If, if it's sold and a house is built on it, there's a note that it can't be used for a, a commercial business at that point.
There is a note there.
Yeah.
I wasn't aware of that because I, I understood it that then the new owner would have to come to the township maybe and say, uh, here's my, my uses for this. I didn't understand it was being restricted because I didn't see that note. So since it's an existing building, is there any reason that should be restricted?
Well. Yeah, it's complicated, so it can't be used as a purely commercial building. There may be some accessory residential uses of the home occupation businesses uh, that are permitted in the ordinance that a new homeowner might be able to do there, but he would need to come in and get his own permit to do that. So I think, I'm, I don't remember exactly how the wording is on the plan, but I think it's still worthy of having a note saying it can't be used as a single commercial business. And then someone could get whatever permit that they could, you know, whatever's legally permitted.
Can't be used as a standalone commercial property.
Yeah.
Makes sense to me, but if it's a residential, then they have to come to the township.
They would have to get whatever permits.
You, you, you understand why I asked that question is because if somebody, if somebody buys a seven hundred thousand dollar home there
Hmm.
And there's all kinds of commercial activity next to them making all kinds of noise.
Yeah.
We're going to have the people coming here complaining to us.
Yeah, I know.
Why did you allow this?
Yep.
We, we're paying ten thousand dollars in taxes and we, we bought a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, and I think those homes are no more than that, by the way.
Yeah, I, I understand, yep.
Okay.
Right, and, and home occupation businesses have some limitations. It's not, home occupation business doesn't have ten employees or, you know, something that would be
Right.
objectionable.
That's why I asked.
Yeah, yeah, so there's, there's, whatever restrictions are in the ordinance already will basically apply to that for a residential lot.
All right, next one?
Let's see, that was, that was five. Uh, number six is another comment about legal descriptions and easement documents. Um, that's all we'll comply. We'll get that handled after approval. Seven is no action. That's just about the site distances. There might, may be some tree clearing needed, um, for one of the driveways, maybe not. But there's no action on the plan for that. Uh, eight is the MPDS permit, which we have already obtained and we are going to send them a courtesy plan showing them what little tweaks we made for the, the township, so they have all the latest stuff. Nine is about the stormwater control narrative. Nine A is just a summary table. Uh, I think we have it further back in the report. We're going to move it up to the front just for Steve's clarity. Uh, B is a waiver, that's waiver number six. Um, this is for spillway liner. So the township ordinance requires that it's concrete checker block for the emergency spillway of the basin. We are proposing to have a permanent liner installed instead. Um, they're easier to maintain. They have very good shear stress velocity, all that. Uh, it's grass instead of having any concrete out there that could eventually break and crumble down into the creek, wash in on the creek. So we prefer to use the liners nowadays instead of the, the checker block. That's more of a an older, uh, standard that we're using less and less, and the Conservation District has approved our, our liner. Um, we have a note on the plan that any liner that the contractor brings up needs to be township approved as well if it varies from what we have proposed on this, so Steve can get a look at it. So that's, that's what that waiver is for.
You all right with that, Steve?
Yes, it, as he said, it's a newer technology than when our ordinance was written.
Okay.
I still prefer the concrete on very large basins and big developments, but in the smaller basins, we've had no problem with the alternate liners.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, do you have any, do you have any additional questions on that waiver?
I don't.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Move on.
Uh, nine C is the operation and maintenance agreement. That's, we'll comply, we'll get that handled after approval. Ten is the sewer planning modules. We have that all approved and provided to the township, so there's no action there required.
Well, there's action, there wouldn't be action required from the township.
Yeah.
They have submitted a revised planning module for the, this layout. It was one approved years ago for the thirteen lots. They have a new one for this.
Okay.
That will require township signatures if, if and when the plan's approved.
Okay.
Uh, eleven is about the waivers that were approved for the thirteen lot subdivision. Um, basically this spells out that we have to do a cost estimate for items that are being waived, uh, which we will comply with. Twelve is the recreation fee, uh, time of building permit. That's a will comply for us too to pay that fee. Thirteen is monuments being installed. Um, that's a will comply. We'll get that certified that they're installed. Fourteen is also about cost estimates for the developers agreements. That's a will comply. Fifteen is legal descriptions. That's a will comply. We'll provide them.
Can I back you up one second? The, the monuments, Steve, will they be concrete monuments?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep. Uh, yeah, fifteen's legal descriptions. Again, that's will comply. We'll get that reviewed by, by the township. Sixteen's a will comply. We'll withdraw that thirteen lot, approve subdivision if this, if and when this one gets approved. And seventeen is that we have to resubmit to the Bucks County Planning Commission for review. That's a will comply if everything's, everything's taken care of. Um, there's a couple of waivers that I didn't touch on in the letter. It's waivers two, three, and four. They kind of all go hand in hand dealing with cartway width, curbs and sidewalks. Um, starting with Butter Creek Road. It's a pretty narrow road to begin with, and then basically right off the edge of the road is the creek and the floodplain, everything like that. Um, we're not proposing any improvements down there or any tie-ins, so we're asking for the waiver to match basically the rest of the road where we're not installing curb and sidewalk down there or widening the road. Same thing for Camp Rock Hill Road, uh, none of the surrounding lots have curb and sidewalk. Um, the road is getting widened a little bit, where the shared driveways are coming in, just because of the, the width of the entrance, but to match the rest of the road, we're asking for a waiver from the cartway width and installing curbs and sidewalks.
Just so you're aware, we are widening a good portion of the frontage on Camp Rock Hill Road, even further than the required widening. Two shared driveways, the eighty foot section is all, um, be widened almost all the way into the ultimate right of way. The two hundred foot section will be widening about sixty, seventy feet of it, so basically we're widening half of the frontage on Camp Rock Hill Road, maybe a little more. We're not putting curb and sidewalk, but we are widening it out.
Is, is, uh, are they paying the fee in lieu of, or is that being worked out with the, with the, with the ops?
That's what's suggested in the letter, that they would provide a, a cost estimate for fee in lieu of, and any of that widening that is being done, because the driveway construction would be backed out of.
Yep.
That amount.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
It would only be for the things that you're not doing.
Yep.
Okay, any questions regarding that matter?
No.
I understand it. Okay.
And then there is a waiver number five is about lighting, at one point, um, we had pla- uh, like, just a single lamppost shown at the start of the driveways. Uh, we had some neighbors come in at the planning commission meeting and voiced their opinion, they don't want any lights, um, that they would shine into their, their bedroom windows and whatnot, so we're asking for a waiver from putting any street lighting or lampposts at the driveways. And that would also match the surrounding area, there's no streetlights.
Just, if you repeat what you just said.
Uh, we're asking for a waiver from the lighting, um, there were some waiver, there were some neighbors that came in at the planning commission, they asked that we didn't do any lampposts at the end of the driveway along the road, just due to their houses being there and shining in their bedroom windows. So we had a partial waiver to do a light, a lamppost, they asked that we install no light, so we, we changed it to a full waiver for no lights.
Thank you.
Yep. I believe that's all the, all the waivers, um, at this time, so we're asking for approval of the waivers and print and final conditional approval based on the township review letter addressing all the remaining comments.
Well, um, we do have a dilemma regarding the driveways, the shared driveways. Dave, where are we at as far as what we have to do here with this?
So tonight was the applicant's presentation, do we have the, uh, deadline for action? I'm not sure when this was submitted.
You, you provided a new extension.
Okay, so we're good on deadlines, but tonight really is just for deliberation discussion.
Okay.
Um, and then at a future meeting, we could, uh, consider a resolution for, um, any of all the conditions that you're agreeing to.
Okay.
So tonight is really just more so a discussion, and then next meeting potentially could be the time to consider a resolution.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation.
Yep.
Did a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I will make the motion to table this to the next one, right, continue?
That's up to the.
So what?
Yes.
Can I ask one question while you, before you do that? Um, I extended it, the deadline to approve. I s- I maybe went on the wrong assumption that once this was ready to go, whether that deadline's in or not, that's not the driving factor. Or I have to now go to the ninety day, I now have to give the township a letter that you have night, that there's ninety days to act on this.
So it's, if you've waived your, uh, the MP, the musicalities planning code deadline, you can always kind of modify your waiver after the fact, you just can't yank the rug out from underneath us, you know, you can't say, well, I want my decision tomorrow. Um, but, um, it's not necessar- we don't want to ever, you know, have the presentation to the board and then ask them to make approval of a, uh, particular plan and a bunch of waivers and conditions all at the same time, I mean, it's, it's proper to have the board discuss it and deliberate more so, as opposed to just make the decision all at once in the same night. But ultimately, it's up to the board, of course.
I'm, I'm proposing that we table it, we continue it next month. Any concern, comments?
I agree with that, I mean, I know the planning commission on August, I guess twelfth made a recommendation, but that doesn't necessarily mean we have to abide by it, we're just, we're the final say. I would prefer we table it.
Okay. Al?
Uh, I think we could act on it, but we have to get a second.
I have an issue with the, with the, like, Mr. Kaiser, with, with the, the, the shared driveways, when they know that they can easily make separate driveways, and then that whole issue goes away, as far as people getting into having issues with their neighbors ten, twenty years down the road. You talk from personal experience, you've been there.
I'm, I'm, I've, my position is trying to protect people that purchase these lots, these are not going to be cheap houses. And, and I, as a representative of this township, I fear people coming here complaining, my neighbor did this, my neighbor did that, he's, he parked this in the driveway, his kids did this. When you have your individual driveway, you don't have that problem. Make individual, make individual driveways, Tim, you started this project a long, long, long time ago. Uh, let's, let's do it right, get it done. Make individual driveways so it can be no fighting, no arguing, nobody coming in here down the road with a neighborly dispute, or complaint, or a fight over who's maintaining the driveway, who's paying for the snow plowing this year. I, I. The Amazon, your Amazon guy came on my yard, or, or my driveway and drove off and made these ruts. Trust me, I went through it.
But I will tell you this, that Amazon driver, when those driveways are split ten feet apart, they're just gonna drive from one driveway to the other.
They, it is, it is possible.
Happens all the time on my end.
It is.
Across the lawn.
But when you're sharing a driveway, you're gonna run into issues, trust me.
I, I get that, and, and I think the length of these driveways help with, and I'm not trying to argue with you, but.
Right.
Um, I think the length of this driveway helps the township's position, and I'm certainly no attorney, but anybody that drives back a nine hundred and fifty foot long driveway, one driveway sees two houses at the end and doesn't, doesn't understand that they're on a shared driveway is, yeah, I would, I would argue that township has no responsibility to that, that's not my.
Well, I disagree with you in a way, because then if someone, someone sees a stranger there, now you got a potential threat or a problem, the police have to be called. Um, fair enough, and so. And we do think about those things as well.
Absolutely, and, and I'll, I, I will definitely, if I, if I agree to split the driveways tonight, are we done? Is this done?
Yeah, I would still need some time to draft the resolution.
Yeah.
But that's your normal process, you authorize the resolution.
We would authorize the resolution.
Because my, my issue is, if we split the driveways though, do I gotta go back to the, through the MPDES, because now the plan's completely different? Now I got two extra driveways, do I have to go through the planning commission again? This is gonna, a- and, and my concern is, and my frustration, and why this has taken so long, is I get to one board and they go, oh no, we want this, this and this, or we won't accept this. Colosseums, I had colosseums on there, they were nice, but the board doesn't like colosseums, so you can't do col- so I had to find a way around that and still be able to somewhat develop. I went through all the process, have the MPDES permit. Now you're basically telling me I might have to go back and start a process again. Because you don't agree with what the planning commission, and, and maybe you're free to do that, but I thought you guys were supposed to work together, they're supposed to represent what this board wants, or what the township wants, not be rogue and say, well, we want this, and then come to another board, and the board, other board says, no, we want that. That's hard to do, and that's the frustration, that's why this has taken forever.
Well, that's not the only reason, you've changed the plan numerous times.
I've had to.
However, however.
If, if I might comment on the NPDS comment, I, I don't think it'll be as bad as you, you're suspecting, because you, you should still be in the same limited, limit of disturbance, and you already accounted for the extra impervious in the stormwater design, so the stormwater design doesn't have to change, correct, Alex?
It's, it's accounted for in the township's calculations, I didn't do the, the NPDS permit for the site.
Oh, okay.
It was done by an engineer, so I don't know how much extra they included, I'm assuming the township has more stringent uh, release rate and requirements, maybe the volume might be slightly different for NPDS, but.
Yeah.
Um.
So now I gotta go through that.
You, you, you'd have to double check it anyway.
So I, if, for adding impervious, it would be a major mod, so you gotta go through the whole admin and technical.
Right, depending on, that's right, I, I forgot that it was a different engineer that had done the NPDS.
Sorry, I came in a little late.
Assuming he had additional impervious in the mix, it may not be a major mod.
But.
If he did not.
Yeah.
Then it would be more of a problem.
I mean, I was asked to split the third one, the third shared driveway, and that's what I did by the other board.
You, you asked the planning commission, this is the board of supervisors.
I get all that.
Okay.
But I, I, you, you can't have one rule of planning commission, and that, it's hard for me.
It's a recommendation, the, the, the planning commission's a recommendation board, advisory board. That's what the, that's what the planning commission is. I gave you my, my view from a shared driver perspective, if you, these are all individual, you change these to all individual driveways? There's not an issue.
Steve, if I change this to all individual driveways after the plan is approved, in other words, before, if the township's makes a, whatever, that before filling permits will be issued, driveways need to be split on the properties to individual properties, then I don't have to go back to the, through the whole process.
Yeah, you do.
You still have to go back through?
Yeah, it still would be not complying with your NPDS permit. Potentially, if, if the impervious wasn't, isn't accounted for.
If it's not accounted for in that.
I mean, we see that all the time, with, there's modifications during construction, and the conservation district requires modifications to the permit. But it doesn't, that modification doesn't have to be done in advance of plan approval. The plan approval could have a condition that the NPDS permit is modified if necessary. Period. It doesn't need to be done for plan approval, it just may need to be done.
Prior to construction.
Right.
Because the reality here seems like to me is two are not gonna vote no matter what I do, unless we split the driveways, so you say, let's table this till next month. We're still gonna have this same conversation next month, I believe, aren't we?
You're gonna split the driveways, you're gonna, you're gonna make the plan so that the driveways are split, they have individual driveways. That's my, that's my concern. You, you, everything else, you seem to have a pretty good order.
Yeah, I get that.
Other than the share, other than the shared driveways. And I stated, I stated my reason why I'm not gonna continue to go over it.
And if I agree to that, you still won't approve it tonight.
Can we?
Well, your process is you would authorize the approval of resolution to be prepared
Fair.
to be voted on at next month's meeting, that's their standard process, they never vote the first night.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Yeah. But I don't see an issue with that, as long as you're, as long as you change things, and, and we, we authorized the attorney to prepare a resolution?
Prepare a resolution with the split driveways.
Okay.
And then we would draft up a new plan and sign it at a later meeting, but you approve the resolution at next month's meeting.
Yeah.
So we can't do anything tonight and then.
Other than, other, you can do something tonight.
You ask them to authorize it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I have to think about whether, which direction I wanna go, so I guess.
Well. The board could authorize the resolution, you could draft it, and then you could take a look at it and think about it, and then you'll have to write back to the attorney to say whether or not you agree, and then you could be ready to go at next month's meeting.
Fair enough.
And if you don't agree, then they wouldn't vote on it.
Okay. Fair enough.
Okay.
It's a win-win.
It is, yeah.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to authorize the resolution uh, conditioned on the driveways being split.
Okay.
I have one, one thing to input, so do you also include lots five and six, that's only the first fifty feet, um, that's getting right into a bend there, um, where it's a shared driveway. So it's, it's just a little set, like, there's not a huge long length, um, fifty feet for a five and six, would you consider just keeping that one?
You're still, you're still having a shared entrance.
It's just the entrance at that point, yeah.
You could meet the requirements of having.
We could, I was, I was just asking if you would consider it or not.
The entrances are gonna tie together.
They, either way, it's gonna be.
Even that whole eighty foot section, if I put three drive, four driveways in, those driveways generally is, is fifty foot open, so it will all tie together.
I believe I, I believe I, I do understand what you're saying. But I, I do believe I was very clear on, on the, the maintenance issues that you deal with when you have a shared.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's the point I'm trying to eliminate here, for future, whoever buys these homes.
Yep.
So we don't run into this problem and have them coming in here to complain to us. Trying to make it simple, so that when people buy these homes, they have their own driveway.
Yeah, I'm doing it more from a, a safety standard, like, Penn Dot doesn't like having driveways right next to each other, that's generally the standard, um, you want some separation, just for pulling out, um, safety reasons, and given that the bend and the curve is right there.
The ordinance, the new ordinance does allow for the entrance to be shared.
Okay.
We do acknowledge that in, in certain, certain cases, it makes sense to have it one entrance.
Yeah.
But then they have to immediately split.
Which, believe that one, pretty much does, I don't know what the ordinance exactly says.
We have a distance per se. It just says after the right of way, I believe.
Okay.
Shared driveway entrance must end at the ultimate right of way line. Separated driveways shall continue on each and as a dual block.
Okay. Okay, that answers my question, thank you.
Sounds like a plan to make a plan.
Yep.
So Hal made a motion.
A second.
Okay, motions were made in second. All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
You gonna prepare something?
I will.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Yep, thank you.
And patients.
Yes.
Uh, the other item I have, a little bit easier, uh, the, what we know is the triple investments warehouse, yeah, the new warehouse on, uh, uh, Corey Road, actually, its official name is a bunch of numbers and letters. Only will know what it is. Uh, they have completed, uh, substantially completed their public improvements, if you've probably all seen, they've also done successfully finished the intersection improvements. Uh, that's been signed off by Penn Dot, they do not have a tenant at this point, but they're looking for you to accept completion of the project and start their eighteen month maintenance period. Uh, we are recommending that, um.
Any questions?
You make a motion to allow that.
This is, to start the eighteen month.
Maintenance, maintenance.
Yeah, and switch their escrow, they'll, they'll, they'll reduce their escrow and, uh, start the eighteen month.
No questions.
I have no issue.
Okay, so everything looks, uh, on the punch list, so I will move.
Okay.
I will move to approve.
Motion's been made?
Second.
Second, all those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Anything else, Steve?
I do not, unless there's any questions.
Any questions for Steve? Okay.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the engineers' report is presented.
I have a second.
Okay, motions were made in second, all those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. And moving forward, next on the agenda is the solicitor's board. David?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing for this part of the meeting, although as was mentioned, we do have legal matters for executive session.
Very well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have no action to be taken, because there's no report. Uh, moving forward, their manager's report is next, Mr. Lippincott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, the first item is the MMO, um, minimum municipal obligation for the pension plan, every year in September, um, a worksheet has to be provided to the board of supervisors, which is included in your packet. The minimum obligation, it's estimated at seventy-two thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars, most of that is covered by, um, state fees. The total unfunded liability is nine thousand twenty.
Okay. But, so we, we, that's just knowledge, or we have?
That's just, you don't have to take any action, it just has to be reflected in the minutes that it is given
Very good.
the board of supervisors, so no action has to be taken, it just has to be in the.
Fully noted.
Uh, the next item is authorize advertisement, uh, for the fire panel meeting, uh, Wednesday, November twelfth. I need a motion from the board of supervisors to authorize that public.
I'll make that motion.
A second?
That's our yearly meeting, that works.
Yep. Okay, you all right with that, Mr. Collins?
Yes, I am.
Okay, motions been made in second, all those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, I just have it, thank you.
Heard a motion asked the, uh, fire guys, that's.
Well, he would already have.
Yeah, I already got.
Already have reached out.
He wouldn't be bringing it to the meeting.
Checking. It's not the first time something's been scheduled.
You're right, you're right.
A second, that's the same date. I just said that was let's be at Holiday House, where it's like, you know, that's the same date as the superdrive.
Yeah, next item is authorize, uh, hiring of Robert Miller as a part-time public works employee, he was a longtime part-time public works employee, currently works for the Department of Defense as a firefighter, he works two days a week on, five days off.
Okay.
So, um, he left the township on good terms, he knows all the routes, he knows the arm mower, he knows the plow routes, I recommend hiring him as a part-time employee.
Okay, we do need somebody on the arm mower.
That is correct, our current person, Kurt, um, is still staying as a part-time employee, but he got a full time down at Saverson.
Okay.
So he would still be able to come out on weekends for emergencies or whatnot, but he's.
It's not the normal groove of the arm mowing.
Right.
So, okay, uh, any concerns, questions?
No, if Mr. Lippincott's making that recommendation, I'll I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion's been made. I will second that. Seconded. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, may move forward with the hiring.
Thank you. And the last item at the Pennerd Regional Police Department uh, meeting last month, um, it was discussed the police budget and it was asked if West Rock Hill would discuss it at their public meeting. You have a copy of the budget chiefs here?
Yes.
Um. Is there any questions, comments?
Uh, I will. I would like to ask the chief to come up to the podium, please, because I do have some questions for him. Just to give everybody a background here, um, the chief has presented a budget to the to the commission previously, and and it's a pretty substantial increase um, due to raises and insurance cost increases. And that increase that was proposed, um, it may be, this is this is going to be a ballpark. It may be between seventeen and twenty percent. We won't know exactly yet because we still are waiting on a few numbers for each municipality. So it's it's substantial money that's going to cost a lot. And we have tried hard here to to manage the funds, so we have not had to raise taxes over the years. However, I've asked the chief to come to uh, answer some questions regarding you know, why the budget is where it is and what it is. And and uh, for for those that don't know, he does have uh, the chief does have an officer proposed for a new hire and another vehicle. So I've asked the chief uh, if we if we took the officer and the car out, what would that do to the budget?
Um, so if you yeah, so if you remove the officer and the uh, vehicle out of the budget, you're going to see a decrease in about a hundred and thirty two thousand dollars to the budget. It's about roughly five percent.
Five percent.
Um. With uh, your monthly contribution to the police department with the officers, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, without the officer, it's roughly a hundred and twenty three thousand dollars. This year, twenty twenty five, it's around a hundred and eleven, I believe it is, a hundred and sixteen with the mortgage of the building.
Yeah.
Um, so yes, it's a significant increase. Um. But yeah, there the that's to include the hiring of the officer in the uh, in September. So be fully trained for the beginning of twenty twenty seven. So we wouldn't hire the officer until September of next year. Um, the hiring of that officer is in response to, you know, a manpower study that was conducted in twenty twenty three. They said that the police department should be staffed with between fourteen and fifteen officers. Currently, we're at thirteen officers.
Right.
Um, discussion that had been through the years, to hire an officer every two years to spread out the hiring. We're at that two year mark, so that's why the officer's in the budget.
Uh, I do. I do want to make sure everybody's aware. It it wasn't eliminating the officer completely. My 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 question regarding it was to delay delay the officer and the vehicle for maybe possibly another year. Um, currently, chief, in the past three years, how many officers have we hired?
Uh, so I went back all the way back to twenty twenty one.
Okay.
For when I was hired.
Yep.
Um, when I was hired, the the police department was staffed with eight officers and two part time officers. Um, so since twenty twenty one, we have hired a total of six officers. Three of those officers were to replace retirements and and separations from the police department. Um. And then two were to replace part time officers because unfortunately now policing is not um, in years past, you were able to hire part time officers and be able to have um, steady employment with those part time officers. Something that we've learned in the last couple of years here that most uh, part time officers, the the part time off, part time police officer is a thing of the past. Um, mainly because of the high level of turnover in other departments. So these officers are being picked up very quickly. So what would end up happening? And this has been discussed in police commission meetings. I don't want to go too much into detail, but basically what happens is we hire a part time officer, we train them, and they go to a larger department.
We've seen that.
Because they got a full time job and it's um, you know, we spent a lot of time hiring and training and then people leaving. So there's expenses there. So the police commission made a wise decision to just hire the uh, two more full time officers. And then in twenty twenty three, we hired um, one officer to bring us up to thirteen officers. So um, the majority of those, five of those hirings were to replace retirements and then also the part time officers.
Correction. Okay, very good. Thank you for that. Uh, one of the things that I look at is in and I we are trying hard to do this is to space out the hiring of officers. So they all don't come eligible for top pay and retirement at the same time. So you're stuck, you know, having to replace a bunch of officers at the same time. However, that being said, that's just that's just a view. The chief is is doing a good job on on how he sees things and where the policing needs to go and what what we need to protect our community, which is which is the important thing that we are committed to. Um, no matter who you talk to, I think we're all committed here to to make sure we have a twenty four seven police department that protects our community. Uh, there was another thing that I want to.
How many cars do we have right now?
Apparently, we have, every time I get asked this question, I have to think about it. I believe we have seven cars.
Okay.
Um.
And the last time we purchased one?
Um, we have purchased the vehicle every year. We have it. We have a schedule in place to replace a vehicle every year. Uh, vehicles usually last about, we usually get between four to five years out of them. Um, usually by the time they roll over the hundred thousand mile mark, they're right. They're at their five year mark for replacement. Um, we've been pretty consistent with sticking to that of an of a vehicle every year. Um, so in the last three years, Mr. Kaiser had asked me to pull numbers. So we have bought, we have bought four cars in the last three years. Um, two of those cars were um, budgeted and spent and bought, purchased um, as was a replacement vehicle for my for the chief. Um, and then this year's car that we bought in twenty twenty five was uh, we use grant funding to do that. We secured a grant to purchase a new vehicle. So I mean, the 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 issue that we were running to is that we may end up having to buy two cars the following year, um, if if we would delay delay the purchase.
Right, yeah.
Um, you know, and would it would get us off that schedule, which concerns me a little bit, but I understand the overall concern of of the not only the police commission, but also the supervisors here.
Yeah, not, you know, we're only we're only talking about this because we still have to.
Oh, yeah, no, understood.
That, you know, I looked at a report that the chief gave me in May of the vehicles to look over, you know, where where cars costing us money, were they nickel and diming us and things like that? Which you wouldn't use. And and at that time, there wasn't anything, but there was a recent thing that happened to a vehicle that the chief explained to me that uh, one of the cars had a problem with the engine or something, and they actually basically had to replace the top of the engine.
That was that was actually uh, about a year ago, but we haven't. We have been running into issues with two of the older cars in the fleet.
Okay.
Um, unfortunately, they they turned out that they were built during the COVID period. So I think that the during that period, some some things were, I've heard from many different chiefs that they're running into issues with those cars that are built during that period. So I understand.
So we do. We do look at that. Um. David, do you have any questions? Uh, any other questions to the chief regarding the vehicles, the the personnel?
I think we covered those two.
Okay, all right. Um. The insurance is is was is a big increase that's going to be that's going to hit us all. That was proposed. It may be more. We don't know yet for sure, right? Because you get your final numbers in October.
Yeah, we won't have a final number until October. Um, it's the number that's there is pretty consistent.
We're in October now, so that number's coming up pretty soon.
Yeah, well, no, we're in September. We'll be in October. Next month, we'll be in October. I know I said it was September.
September fest.
Um, no, um, so yeah, usually we have those numbers. It's usually towards the end of October.
Okay.
You get those numbers from the insurance company. Um, the numbers that I did crunch that we do have in the budget there this year are um, within the the normal average of what we've had in the last three years. That's usually how I go about doing it when we budget it between myself and the public safety committee. Um, you know, the the numbers are what the numbers are.
Numbers are numbers are. Can I ask you, um, for those of you that that don't know, when an officer is hired, they're hired at a salary. It's not really a high salary, fifty five, fifty fifty five thousand or something like that a year.
It's a little higher. It's it's gone up in the last couple of years since the last contract.
But but besides that, now there's something that that is called a step step increase where after their first year, they get it, they get a bump up and then they get a bump up till they get up to their, what, five years?
Yes, sir.
When they're when they're at full rate. So that's something that most of us don't really pay attention to really as close as we should to analyze what the increases will be. Now, when we did the last contract, the last police union contract, I realized and we all as a as a group, we realized that uh, the increase to just to cover the percentage raises was like two hundred and fifty thousand over the five year course of the contract. That wasn't counting the step raises and stuff. So there are there are costs that continue to rise that are beyond our control. We can't really say we you've got to cut this. You've got to cut this. You can't. There's things that that can that you have with a police department, twenty four seven police department that you have to pay that are there. So it's very challenging because we want this gentleman to do his job and to have the proper personnel to to protect us, but it's our job to try to manage your financial status as far as what we allocate. So we we do have a really tough decision here that has to be made um, on on where we go and what we do forward. I but personally, I would like to get public input on what, does anybody have any public comment regarding where we should? Should we move towards looking at the um, you know, a possible tax increase? It's going to be substantial. We don't know the real numbers yet all the way. I'll ask this gentleman here, chief. Thank you. You can let him get to the podium.
I'll just stand to the side.
Thank you so much. Please state your name and address.
My name's Chris Link. I live at one nineteen West Branch Road.
Hey.
Um, I think the one point I would like to make is I think the police is the last place you should skim.
Yeah.
Um, I question revenues coming in with all the new building that's happening, the Wawa, the triple net thing. That revenue that should be generated from their tax bases should be helping offset some of this to taxpayers. I don't know whether there's any kind of special tax forgiveness that's being handed out to all these businesses that are coming in. But I would think there should be substantial revenues coming in from buildings like this triple net project. Now, Branch Road for me to access three oh nine, my choices are Quarry Road and Meeting House Road. You're putting a Wawa at one and you put triple net at the other. You're not putting any lights. It's triple net is my understanding. I don't know who did the traffic studies, but at six thirty in the morning, when I'm trying to turn left on State Road, I can't turn left because of the traffic. It's going to be magnified when you start running trucks through there. So I think that we got to find a way to pay the police and let them do their job. And their job's going to get tougher because you're going to have more accidents on Meeting House Road. Or not a Meeting House on State Road when you start putting all these spots in here. So that's my question is where could the money be coming from besides just taxing the residents?
Well, to ask you or to to explain to you, we have been running the township. That's been my motto is is to try to generate revenue through commercial growth and development in the areas that can handle it. So that we didn't have to raise taxes, but you you can't you can't make enough revenue to do the things that you do in the township without possibility of raising taxes. When you talk about a police budget that's like this, the amount of money that we're talking here, okay?
I manage my household budget. So and I don't have a choice to say, hey, I need more money to manage my household.
I just want to give you a little bit of a background history. Last year, we had a twelve percent increase in the police budget, which we swallowed. Okay, township. We went into the into our reserves and 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 covered that. We do have a lot of money that's scheduled for road improvements for next year as well. So there is money that you do need to continue to keep our roads up in condition. Um. Your comment is greatly appreciated and taken under advisement. And we do look at all this stuff. This is why we want to have an open discussion with residents to get their point of view on how we move forward with this situation.
Now, it with the insurance costs for the police officers, health insurance, that type of thing is a larger portion of that being borne by the police officers because it is being borne by the school teachers in our district right now. And I know that firsthand.
Uh, they pay they pay a percentage, five percent, five percent. Five percent. They pay five percent.
One of the one of the, if I can, one of the issues with the, sorry, excuse me, one of the issues with the healthcare is um, and why we've seen such a jump in the last couple of years is that um, you hire these officers when they're either single and then they get married and then they start having children. And unfortunately, we see that impact um, on our healthcare side of it as well. So that's part of where some of these increases are coming from. I would say that's probably where the majority of the increases are coming from. They go from single plans to family plans.
Yeah.
And that's about annually, that's probably about a twenty thousand dollar increase. So when you had a point where you had officers, where their healthcare is twelve thousand dollars, now it's costing us thirty some thousand dollars a year. So that that's part of where the issue comes up.
Okay, thank you.
I I guess I probably said everything I wanted to say.
I I we appreciate.
I appreciate you guys hearing me. Just I'm concerned with
taxes. Anybody else? Public comment? Dave?
I have a little history uh, being on the school board, understanding the step allowance and all that kind of stuff and understanding contracts because we negotiated contracts for the teachers and the support staff um, during the twenty twenty three school year. Um, we had also during the school, well, through the school district, we have a capital projects plan. So we planned for a six year projects plan. So we have six years where we understand how much money we're spending over the course of time. And even during COVID, because I was on a school board at that time, we did, well, we had a, we cut back on the buses. But we still knew we needed them as far as. So I understand as far as like vehicles, they wear, they they wear out that you still put miles on them. You still put hard miles as far as that as as opposed to a bus driving. You know, it's, you know, hard miles. So I understand that. So with the capital projects plan, you actually plan to what year you're hiring an officer, what year you're getting a new vehicle. And it's a six year window versus a single year window or a two year window. So I think you're able to plan a little bit easier. Um, insurance is just ridiculous, but that's my opinion. But um, if you have the numbers, what would be that increase that would be affiliate? Or could you watch some of the other budgets? That's what my questions would be. I'd I'd have to look at all the numbers, but I mean, that would be something that would be like, okay, I know, because the school district just raised taxes four percent and it was minimal. So I don't know what it would be on the township side.
We do look at the numbers very closely.
Oh, no, I wasn't saying that. I was saying I would, that's all. I would like to put eyes on it. That's all.
Um, you're welcome to to come to the police commission meetings too that we have there. That's the fourth Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Five P M.
Five P M. Yep.
Okay. Perfect.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any other public comment? Yes, man.
Cheryl Kogasi, Seven Augustine Road. My concern is if there would be more people getting stopped for speeding, and I complained before about speeding out here.
Just move a little, little closer to Michael. Just just so that the thing Mike can pick you up.
Speeding out here is horrendous. An officer, I went up to the park today trying to cross the ridge road is horrendous. People don't slow down. And today I was, I walked over to the park and officer was sitting in the in the road there. Cars were going by. He didn't pull out once to stop anybody. So my thing is if there would be more speeding tickets, would that help? Because I remember back in the day they used to get an incentive getting a toaster if they would have so many speeding tickets.
A toaster?
No, 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 but they did. I remember Frank Crane giving out. Okay, I'm saying back in the day.
Okay, I want I want to, I want to pause you a minute. Chief, would you please explain to her the process of when somebody would get a ticket if they had to go to court, the officers, we would have to pay overtime to 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 the officer?
Part of the concern with part of the concern with Ridge Road and we've, I mean, I I know that this young lady's not going to be happy when I say this is the speed limit is, I'm not exactly sure what it is out here, but forty five miles an hour is is thirty five miles an hour, forty five miles an hour is fast. And, you know, it it's it's so now, before you even have the authority to stop someone in a police car, they have to be going fifty one miles an hour with the timing devices we have. And to be honest with you, most officers won't stop anybody for speeding a ridge road uh, in general, if they're not ten miles over speed limit.
Right.
Um, and on the side note of that, Ridge Road is a very difficult road to pull out of and start chasing someone to pull them over. It's a safety safety concern for the officers. Not that we don't, not that we wouldn't do it, but we also don't have the tools that other states and other and other municipalities in the in the in the country have. We don't have radar. So we are disadvantaged in in that sense of it. Um, and I mean, to answer her question about more speeding tickets and more cops. Unfortunately, there's many many laws and and case law that has been developed over the years that says you're not allowed to do write more tickets to generate revenue.
Right.
It's part of the reason why they, that's usually the argument against radar is that it will generate revenue for the municipalities. Which is not a true argument in my opinion, but um, I understand her concerns about Ridge Road. I do understand where she's coming from. Um, but yes, basically.
Thank you for that statement.
I did not know that, and I just wanted to see if there was an incentive for them to do this. That's all.
Sometimes it makes your chief happy.
Well, that.
But they don't worry about that incentive.
Well, I just thought maybe if they got more speeding tickets, it would be more money into their.
And 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 your request and your concern now, he has heard. And 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 your request and your concern now, he has heard. So now he can call for the officers that are patrolling this area, okay?
And I, I, yeah, no, I have, no, I follow this, I follow the speed limit, believe me, and I've been complaining to sellers on Perkasie too about speeding, and nobody does anything, and that irritates me to no end. So I just, not that it gets you.
No, no, don't, don't offense, David.
I'm just tired of everyone speeding. I hear it going down by paths. I can hear them shifting. It's like, it's pathetic.
I understand.
Sorry, bye.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, is there any other public comment regarding this police situation? Yes, Mr. John?
Johns Wardox, seven fifteen Ridge Valley Road, pretty much want to echo this gentleman's comments. You don't want to cheat out on the police department. But I've been a member of the planning commission now for a while. We've seen a steady stream of development. I don't know how many new residents it takes to pay for a police officer. But I got to think that there's some correlation between the amount of tax money coming in due to these new residences and the money that you're able to pay out for um, police department cost. And there's a lot of development in the pipeline. I wouldn't want you to necessarily count on that, but there's still going to be a certain amount of development in the pipeline that's going to factor into future revenue that would help offset the um the additional cost of the police department. And the other open ended question I would ask is what is the population change been over the last ten years in the township? I would think that the population has increased and just on a percentage basis, the number of officers you would need to support the population would need to increase proportionally as well.
Right. Okay, thanks for your comment. Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am, in the back. That's okay.
Arienne Wilson, five hundred, Johanna Drive.
Yes.
Um, give the police what they want. I just got a notification. Three police officers were shot down this evening or this afternoon. Give the cops what they need, please.
Okay.
My son in law is one. So I worry about him all the time.
All right. Okay, any other public comment regarding this matter? In the budget? Okay. Thank you for the input on that matter. Okay, chief, if anything additional you would like to add?
I could talk all night, but you don't want me to do that.
No, um, we we do have, we do have to think about this situation because, of course, this is September. We would like to, I I would like to table and ponder till next month, and then we will revisit this on what we want to do. Hopefully by then we'll have a little more accurate numbers that will that will be able to be helpful to be used. We we do look at revenues that come in all the time, but the but the revenues that come in in my estimation, without really analyzing every single dollar, they don't make enough up enough revenue to 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 match the increase, the percentage increase of what the what the um budget will be. Because if it's, if this is accurate, you're talking about a thirty percent increase in the last two years. And and it could be more, it could be more. That's a lot of money in two years. We we don't generate that kind of revenue in to make to make up that. And everybody has known, we've we've tried really hard to make sure that our roads are taking curve in the township. We've we've spent a lot of money on, you can see the five, six hundred thousand dollars we we spend on paving every year. Uh. I am committed. I sometimes would like to delay and slow things down a little bit with the chief to space out hiring, to space out vehicles, but he's telling us what he needs. He's telling us what he should have. It's up to us to decide where we go and how much we spend at a time. But I do thank each and every one of you that gave public comment in your in your direction because it does matter when we have to make this decision up here. That will be difficult. Okay? Thank you, chief.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Okay. What's next?
That's all I have.
That's all you have?
Yeah. Move the manager's report.
All right. That being said, I will entertain a motion to for uh approval on the manager's report as presented. So moved. Okay, motion's been made.
No seconds.
Second, all those signify by saying aye, aye. Okay. Old business? I have one thing. And that is the condition of Ridge Road. I am not happy
Horrible.
with the paving, the overlayment that was done on Ridge Road. It is horrible. It's one of the worst paving projects I've ever seen, and I get around a lot of states. It seemed like it was rushed. It looked to me like it's wavy. Uh, there there's a, there's a bump over here at Almont for the transition where that should have been smooth paved in. I plan on having a talk with Mr. Preston. Now, I know we got him to overlay the other side for free. So we did get the entire Ridge Road overlaid where they only really had to do half. But as far as the company that did the work, I don't have a lot of faith in them, and I know that you have to go with the lowest responsible bidder. It's, it doesn't make it right that that you get a not quality job. I don't know where the inspector was on this job. Uh, I don't know, but I just wanted to make it known publicly that I was not happy with the with the end result, and I don't think a lot of you people were. Probably drove on it already, right? It's better than what it was.
Yeah.
Uh, when they were doing the digging, it wasn't better than what it was before they started the digging.
Right. You know, if you go to the Naceville Hotel and head towards Tyler's Port and you're in, obviously, the right lane. That was the lane that they put pipe in when they came from Tyler's Port to Naceville. In five years, that whole road is wasn't backed filled correctly, and it's starting to fall apart already.
Yeah.
From the Naceville to the Tyler's Port. So I expect to see the see the same thing happen out here.
I sure hope not because they were supposed to, um, they were supposed to dig that blacktop out of there and put this a solid reconstruction in before they overlaid. Did they do that or don't you know?
I was not involved in.
No, it was, it's a state project. I know that. It it was a Penn dot inspector probably. Um, and they did do some of the paving uh at night because of request of the uh the traffic, you know, trying to eliminate the traffic problems uh with the pool. That that's no excuse. When you do a job, you do it right. Uh. Blooming Glen did the did the job on Old Mill. Anybody go down to Wilcox or over there on that? That that's a beautiful job. That is as smooth, as smooth as you ever want to see smooth. And if anyone want to drive that, go check it out. Not a lot of houses on that road, but they did a fabulous job. That's the way a paving job should be done, and that was done at nighttime. Regardless, that was, that's my beef with the old business. Anybody else have any old business?
Uh, just one thing which we was completed. I do want to uh thank some of the people, thank the people who volunteered to come out and help fix one of the pavilions out in James Park. So thank you, Johnny.
Yes.
Thanks, boys.
Uh. The the James Park, the additions and stuff are looking beautiful over there. Everything's been done really well. There's a couple minor things that I have would like to see tweaked, but not now. There's a couple of things that there's some cracks where roots came through and some paving needs to be done. It's another, that's a future thing to to look at, and I had it on my mind to look at for next year is is to overlay the walking trail, but that's, you know, that's another discussion for another night.
Right, and if we do that, we have to be careful with the edges. People could turn an ankle because they had to be backfilled with.
Yes, you're correct. You're correct. It has to pass a smooth transition, so we don't have that issue. For sure. And we have to do it when it's dry, absolutely for sure. Um, but at the gazebo, the grass is growing. Hopefully, we get grass at the at the pavilion before September Fest. If not, we'll be investing in some straw. For sure. Okay, is there any new business?
I have old business.
Oh, you have old business. Sorry, sorry.
Um. And you, Mr. Lupin, you may not know this, um, answer to this. Why is B Enterprises not, why are they still in trailers?
They haven't closed out the uh.
What, I mean, the one end of the building hasn't been finished at the top, the gable end.
I can look into it. I don't know why it's not finished, uh, but I can.
I just, seems like it's going on forever.
I will share, I will share with you, um, Mr. Collingwood. I used B Enterprises for title transfer on trailer recently. And not only do they, it's not just getting, they they do fingerprinting in there if you don't know.
And it's crowded.
It was so crowded, you couldn't, there wasn't enough seats for the people. They had, people were leaving, people were standing outside. There's not enough parking.
I think they get more traffic for fingerprint.
Let's, let's see if we can move it along to get them back in their real building. Okay, they do.
And the employee, Shirley, who works there, she's frustrated.
Yes.
She's really frustrated. Why are you still in these trailers?
Yeah, right. Good point made, though.
That was my question.
Yep. Okay, uh, I guess we'll move on. Any new business?
I have none.
I have none.
Okay. Okay, any uh public comment? Anybody have any public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Sylvia Sheehan, Hayfler Road. We were talking about the park, and as a daily walker there, could it be plowed in the winter when everything else is done? Just one pass over it so we can walk all winter?
The trail, the walking trail.
Yeah.
We will, we will discuss that with the manager. It may be difficult due to the softness of the terrain on the sides of the trail if you do have to go off it. But I do get your.
Yeah, it turns to ice.
Yes.
Because people still walk it, and then it's ice, and then it's worse.
Sure, and if you do, if you do plow, you know, then you you're going to have to solve it and stuff too. Um, so we have to, we have to take that into calculation, but we definitely will take that under advisement.
It's a good thought.
Very good thought. Thank you. Greg, write that down, please.
I did. Get a Polaris. It'll fit right in the middle of the.
More money.
Well, you got a Jeep.
Jeep, yeah, right, the Jeep. Any other um public comment? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion for adjournment into executive session.
So moved.
Motion's made.
I will second.
Second, all those signify by saying aye, aye. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for your input. Very much appreciated. Does somebody turn the heat on here? Is it me?